... To the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wow, that was awesome. What a great crowd. Thank you all for being here tonight. First thing on the agenda, just a couple of minutes for the last meeting. I'll entertain them.
That's right.
We'll call those two.
Hi.
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 Ron, you want to give us a quick update on technology before we get started?
Yeah. A little bit of new technology in the room today from the council members. Can everybody hear me?
Yeah, it works great.
That's kind of a first in this room, I think. So, we have, and for those that approach the microphone, it should be turned on. Hopefully, the speaker system works better. It will allow us to access the Internet. We can pull up information on the Internet if we need to. For the members on council, if you hold your button in, it will turn it on. And there's a view button if you have a conversation off the record. And we'll turn it off after the meeting. And it also allows us to record all of our meetings. And not do it with a wire across the entry where everybody has to come in. So, those are all good things. So, if you have any questions for the meeting, let us know.
Awesome. First item on the agenda. We are to the visitors to communications section. We have a new chief in the city of Fort Thomas. And I didn't realize, I'd never got to do this before. It was always the chief doing these kinds of activities. I didn't realize I had to do this, but congratulations. Glad you're here. Welcome, welcome. I mean, you've been here forever, but anyway, welcome to the community position. Very much so. I understand you're waiting.
Yes, sir.
Your left corner?
Yeah.
You should come too. Come on.
Come on up.
Come on, come on up.
I'd like you to do the honors.
James, get up.
Can I?
Slide, slide, slide. His heart is right here.
Yeah.
We're close, guys.
Thank you very much. All right, the next item on the agenda is all of the winners, the trophy winners from the parade. What a great parade. Wasn't it nice and cool that day? It was great weather, wasn't it? Now, I tell you what, I am always so impressed with the city of Fort Thomas and the parade. People putting out their chairs, two days in the bands. And everybody watching the parade, it was really a great event. So, anyway, the parade winners. Representatives come up and I will give you the trophies. The best represents the theme. First place goes to Fort Thomas Education Foundation. Oh, they couldn't be here till five o'clock. All right, let's go down to most original. Third place, Dance Round. Anybody from Dance Round here? There she goes. Congratulations. All right. Most Original, second place, H.R. Real Estate. Anybody from H.R. Real Estate? And first place for most original, the Fort Thomas Conservancy. Anybody here from the Conservancy? Congratulations. All right, what? All right, most entertaining, third place, Syrian Shrine of Cincinnati. Congratulations, sir. Congratulations. Oh, thanks for being there. Congratulations, sir. Oh, for now, guys, we're up here. We're the little cars.
Right now, they don't fit in the elevator, right there. Right there until we're rolling in. Too old.
We're big, small. Great. Thank you all very much. Okay, for most entertaining, second place, Bella Dance. Anybody from Bella Dance? Congratulations. Thank you for being part of the parade. All right. And in first place, Commonwealth Artist Summer Theater. Well, boss, for fiction.
Were you the one that was singing?
Uh, no, that was another actor.
Guys, appreciate it.
Thank you.
I think they charge.
I'll take H.R. Real Estate. My wife didn't even realize she got it. I'll take it. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Chuck, why don't you come up too? We missed your picture as well. Did you get it? All right. All right, Chuck, here, take a picture with. Great, great. I'll give you the list. Before we proceed further, Jim, would you mind describing the situation on the text amendment and how we are to the point of an additional first reading?
Am I on? Red light's on. Am I on?
No, red light is off.
Okay. Am I on?
Pull it closer.
Am I on? Red light's on. Now, am I on? Okay, try again. Ask me. I'd like to just spend a few minutes, if I may, going back to the last meeting that we had, because some of you, I think, are in places and some this will be a repeat. When we are dealing with our...
Well, I think the mic is...
Happen to hear me? Okay. When we're dealing with the zoning ordinance, we have text that we can amend. And we have a map which we can amend. Two different processes. Some of the parts of the process are the same and some are different. Tonight, we have a first reading of both. One is a text amendment and one is a zone change. So, I'm going to very briefly just talk about each. When we have a text amendment, that is a change in the wording of the zone ordinance. It's not a change of the zone of a particular piece of property. This evening, it is a text amendment in regard to self-storage facilities. The text amendment defines the facility and it also includes it in general commercial. So, any general commercial zone in the city, if this is approved, that would be accepted use in a general commercial zone. So, it's not attached to one particular piece of property. It's any property in a general commercial zone. And as I explained last meeting, the process is defined by the Kentucky statutes. It's not defined by city council. And the process for a text amendment is that the planning commission shall hold at least one public hearing, which they did. And they then base, and at that meeting, the proponent and any opponents are free to voice their opinions, their thoughts, express their concerns. That's the venue that you have to express your opinion on this issue. Tonight is not a hearing. Tonight, we are not going to have a hearing. We're not going to take information on this particular text amendment. That time has passed. The process now is that that transcript which has been made and the minutes have been presented to council. They make a decision based on that record. They don't make a decision based on comments subsequently. So, that's why we ask that you not make comments tonight, because this is not a public hearing on that topic. Now, at the last meeting, we told all of you that this was a first reading of that amendment, of that ordinance, and that we would have two readings. You have a first reading, you have a second reading, and then you have a vote. Now, we, at the last meeting, mentioned to you that there was a transcript made of that hearing. The transcript was done by an individual who was not a city employee. We had somebody on the outside do the transcript. We got the transcript and we realized that this person didn't always know who was speaking or who was saying something, because they didn't identify themselves. And one of our secretaries in the planning department, who attends all those hearings, knew those voices and knew those names. So, she went in and put names to things that just said, like Speaker 19 or Speaker 21. It was not a substantive change of any of the comments. It was more of just kind of a cleanup of details. That transcript, that corrected or revised transcript, was not completed prior to our last council meeting. When you have a first reading, you should have that transcript from that, those minutes, in final form. And unfortunately, we did not. So, you shouldn't start the process of the first reading and second reading until those records are in the hands of council members. So, tonight will actually be the first reading of that text amendment. And our next meeting will be on September 4th, which is a Tuesday. We usually meet on the 3rd Monday, as you know, except June, it's June. Yeah, June and September, we also meet on the 1st Monday. So, the second reading of this will be on September 4th. That's a Tuesday. So, that talks about the text. Now, let's talk about a map amendment, because we do have a map amendment tonight. It's also going to have a first reading. A map amendment is when an individual asks for their property to be rezoned. So, tonight, we are going to have a first reading of a zone map amendment. The property is located at 1960 Memorial Parkway. The request is to change it from a residential R1C to a professional office. So, that will also be the first reading. Similarly, we've had a hearing on that. So, again, we're not going to take testimony tonight, because this is not a hearing. That hearing has already been held. It was held this last Wednesday. And anybody who came had the opportunity to speak either in favor or against it or to ask questions. So, I don't know, that is basically kind of a summary of the process.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. So, we are still at the point of the meeting. I wanted to clarify that before we open the floor for any comments from citizens, because those topics that you said are not open for discussion tonight. But if anyone has any other topic that they'd like to address council on, now with our new technology, make sure you step forward, come up to the microphone, state your name and address, and then we'll tell us what you want. I saw a hand back there. Come on up.
My name is Tim Hodery, Liberty Team Hawthorne. And I'm just posing a question. I guess.
Just press the button.
Again, Tim Hodery, Liberty Team Hawthorne Avenue. And I'm only posing a question, and that is, it's readily apparent that you are all addressing a flaw, trying to set notice straight in the proceedings. I would just like to bring to light that there is another flaw potentially in proceedings of a fair notice. I know the state of Ohio, my last involvement in a matter, this was 10 years ago, so I'm going to put that caveat on it, is that the state of Ohio, all abutting property owners are required to receive certified mail notices of any sort of change. I own a budding property owner. I received no such notice. I'm just putting that on the record. I do not know if that's a requirement. I'm not an attorney. So, I just would like to put that on the record.
Are you in a budding property owner for the text amendment or for the zone change?
Text amendment.
The, in Kentucky, the certified mail to abutting property owners is when we have a zone change. In other words, if you were next door to 1960, they have to notify you. You're really... The text amendment is not to a particular piece of property. So, you're really not abutting...
I understand that argument, but I also understand that, to me, it seems like this in actuality, a zoning change. But you're couching it as a text amendment, which I don't think is potentially legal or even appropriate. So, I don't really know. But it just does not present itself as being a lot more...
Appreciate your comments. Just to let you know, at the last meeting, there was a lot of discussion around the notice. And we did describe that the State Committee has finally made some changes to allow us to look at doing notice online through the website, other methods. I don't know exactly what stage that in. Staff is collecting data and law labor license committee is going to meet within the next month and look at ways to improve that system to have better notice of all these meetings that we are doing. Just give you information.
And so, per question, three else of the rest of what I want to say. The... Is the red light on? Is it on now? If the red light's on, you're muted. Time's up. You're muted if the red light's on. If it's off. So, to conclude, I, if that is a requirement, I never received such notice. I wasn't aware of the June 20th meeting. And so, I did not attend it and was not able to voice my concerns at that appropriate time. Mr. Haas, I didn't know, Mayor Haas, I didn't know whether... This would be also the appropriate time for me to voice some of these, some specifics regarding warehouse properties being in the zone as far as requiring buffering zones, green space buffering zones. If indeed it is going to go through and have such structures put up, there should be some precautions that be placed, like I'm aware in Hilton County, they require certain setbacks that are required to put up green screens, green areas to...
Can I interrupt you?
Yes.
You're basically giving testimony to the hearing that was on the 20th.
Right. Conditional on the fact that I didn't get to speak on the 20th, because I didn't receive notice.
Can I interrupt?
Sure.
And let me clarify just two things really quickly. And I don't know if this was clear before you left the meeting before. There is no statutory requirement to give notification to any of our...
There is not in Kentucky.
There is not in Kentucky.
In Ohio?
For a text amendment, okay? Because the text amendment will only put language into the zone ordinance that will allow it to use. So, it's not specific to a property, it's specific to a zone. And to carry your next question, if there were an actual zone change in the development plan considered by the planning commission, the abutting property owners are required to notify, would be notified at that hearing. And at that time, the remainder of the zoning text would apply, which includes issues of setback, landscaping requirements, lighting, and a number of other issues that are related to a natural development plan. At this time, there is no development plan that's been presented or considered. Does that help?
That helps a lot, but I'm not saying that I, over in Ohio, we used to receive notices on our properties for signage, you know? Even though the signage was, might have had a small, almost minuscule variance.
Right. Then again, based on statute, you're referring to Ohio statutes, and I'm also not familiar with what process you're talking about. So, for example, if we had a design review and it was specific to a property, it would be a notification in front of the sign. If there were a variance from a setback, it would go toward the adjustment and any abutting property owner would receive it because it's specific to a property. And so, I don't know if perhaps the conditions were different, for example, besides...
So, maybe I didn't clarify exactly. So, my thoughts are that, to use an analogy, if you have an R1C zone, just mentioned, so if you have an R1C zone here, and you decide to add a text amendment to allow something that's not typical of the R1C, like a gas station or something, and there, and use a text amendment to get that put in, that is essentially what I'm implying that is occurring to this process. Because I believe, over in Ohio, we used to own industrial property up in Butler County, and that was also an industrial all. We had 5,000 warehouses, 36,000, 37,000 square feet. And it was also an industrial, you know? They were not allowed to be put up in a general commercial in that area. So, I think I've said all that I need to say, but I hope that the city council does consider things going to the future about setting green space areas to make these structures more tolerable for everybody that lives there.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Would anyone else? Yes, ma'am. You don't have to hit it every time it's on. Here's the red light's on.
I'm Rachel Stolz. I live at 87 Hawthorne Avenue. And I would like to address you all about general appearances in our immediate neighborhood. These structures are very appealing. They're well-kept. They're, I think, attractive. But the ones right across from it, they've got weeds that are literally this tall. The grass has not been mowed. There's a major neglect. The building where the optometrist was, Dr. Myers, has been for sale for ages. And this is the property that is right next to it. Their parking lots are shared or abut. There's just no way this building is ever going to sell with this structure here and weeds really tall all over the place. And this, these pictures were taken all the same time. You know, their yards are all mowed, so why aren't these others being mowed? And who, who's in charge of them? Who regulates these? Here, the weeds are real tall. The grass is grown. You've got stuff growing up to the house. It's very unsightly. The whole neighborhood is suffering. You know, and the question is, these other facilities, you know, what kind of reputation, you know, if you've got apartment for rent? Do you want to be right next to this?
I appreciate your concerns. We do have a zoning administrator that can look at those properties and issue citations if there's issues that have to be dealt with. So, we consider that we'll give them...
So, do residents have to file a complaint? I mean, these are right on 27th. You can't help but see them. I mean, it's not like it's, you know, down the lane or tucked away.
Well, certainly, it certainly helps if there are issues out there. The residency, just call the city and you probably give a whistle on the phone and just let her know that there are issues that you're concerned about. And then someone from staff can review the properties and take the steps necessary to have them correct.
Well, that goes to the next question, is do we have a city plan? Do we have a city plan?
We've been working on that just the past couple of years. We've been through a visioning process, and the plan is wrapping up right now. Our six different committees are reading this month, and we should have done October, maybe into November, but yes.
So, is this new?
It's an update. It's an update. We're just hoping to have this plan in every city that has...
I would say. I have been involved in them. And one of the things that they look at is what does an area need? What are things that they need to do? What services are lacking in a community? So, can we get a copy of this plan?
Absolutely. In fact, all those questions have been dealt with by a large group of citizens that have been involved with this from the beginning. And we've made some really great headway. So, yes, there's information available. There's a link on the website to the plan.
It's FT Community Plan.
So, are the current changes, either in voltage or in zoning or anything, are they part of your plan? Or are we just kind of willy-nilly yet? Are we just doing a quick fix to things?
Of course not. No, I mean, this has been a very involved process. It's been a couple of year process. We will head to deal with the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan, which is the statutory requirement that the city updates on a five-year basis. We've gone much deeper than that, much deeper. And we have a lot of...
But are these current changes that are coming up?
Oh, yes.
They fit into your long-term plan?
What? I'm not sure. Are you talking about tall grass? Yes, that's...
Oh, I'm talking about also the rezoning. You know, we had the IGA store there next to Chris's. And all of a sudden, the shelves were half-empty. We go, what's going on? Are you going out of business? Oh, no, no, we're not going out of business. And finally, after a couple of weeks, it said, well, yeah, they tripled our rent, and we can't afford to stay. So, we're closing.
Well, those are all market conditions that the city really doesn't have any control over. But yes, we are working on them.
Well, it wasn't the fact that it wasn't needed, because if you wanted to see somebody from my street, you went to the IGA store. And that's true, isn't it? It's the fact that they increased the rent three times. So, everybody, the hardware store moved out, IGA moved out, the building left, and it just sat for years. Then they did a little construction, and then they left. And then they did a little more construction, and then they left. I think it took them eight years from the time IGA closed till there were occupants in that building. And we don't want that to happen, because that's killing some of these people, these businesses. They're doing well, but they cannot tolerate having things a mess for years.
Well, we certainly understand that. In fact, we've just added a board to the city to help deal with some of these problems. That's something new that we haven't had in the past. That will help us with these issues. For market conditions, the city government doesn't have anything to do with market conditions.
That actually was not a barbie.
but we can certainly take care of those problems.
That actually was not a problem.
If you could leave those with us, then we can follow up and check out the properties and see what can be done about and moving them. Appreciate your time and your concerns. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name's Matt Frye. I am, I live on 3829 Melbourne, 3829 Eight Mile Road in Melbourne, Kentucky, but my family has owned a business in Fort Thomas, Kentucky since 1973, Donald R. Frye Co., Municipal Software. I'm just saying hi, because I'm part of AKU Student Government, and you know, it's a part of our plan this year, is get more critically engaged, and so I'm just here to show some face and, you know, make some connections with you all, and plug a personal event of ours that we're putting together, hosting a debate between Will Schroeder and Rachel Roberts on October 2nd, in our student union ballroom at 6:00 PM, so at 6:00 PM to 7:30. It's going to be a wonderful event, we'd love to see a packed house out there, especially, you know, an area that is within those counties that the 24th Senate District represents. We'd love to see you all there, so I'm just here to say hi, thank you.
Would anybody else want to?
Hello, does that work? Okay. My name is Tom Morrison, I live at 96 Hawthorne. I wanted to speak to the comment that was made before about proper process around restricting dialogue as it pertains to what goes on in the planning commission. Just curious, I know I came to the planning commission just this past week, and I think at the prior council, I also asked a similar question about why are rules in place that mean that the only input that can go into the council has to come out of minutes of that meeting? And I'm curious, because I'm wondering if there's been any benchmarking, I asked for whether it was Kentucky revised statute that explicitly said that, to my knowledge, I cannot find that. I asked if there was a specific case law example, none was referenced, and so I don't know, have you benchmarked this decision that all input on things like a text amendment must be only done through the planning commission meeting minutes?
Well, first of all, the KRS specifically talks about the public hearing, the planning commission shall hold. So if there's a text amendment or a zone change, the statute specifically says that it will go to the planning commission, and they shall hold at least one public hearing upon notice. They then make a recommendation of approval or disapproval, which goes to the council. Council then reviews that record, and there's case law, there are cases that talk about that. But that's their, we don't have another hearing. I mean, the Kentucky revised statute doesn't provide for a hearing at planning commission, and then they make a decision, and then another hearing here, and then they make a decision.
And to be clear, I'm not asking traditional hearings, I'm just wondering why is a public discourse, whether pro or against, cannot continue in between that hearing and the final vote? Why are council members cannot be listening, or at least send that discourse? I'm just going to give you an example. I happen to know Tyson Hermes, the mayor of Earlland, so I made a call to Mayor Earlland, and I said, hey, here's what's happening over in Fort Thomas. We have this planning commission, he was completely familiar with it, he goes, oh, the planning commission, yeah, oh, the text amendment, yes, I know what you're talking about. And I said, after your planning commissions are over, is there a limitation on voters then connecting with their council members, considering those council members aren't even at the commission? We're not talking directly to our elected representatives at that commission, and it feels like we've been separated from that direct interaction. I said, is that the way it works in Earlland? And he said, absolutely not. He was appalled by it. He said, feel free to reference my name. So I'm very curious if this is an opinion of Fort Thomas, or if this is an actual rule that we are not allowed to talk about this reading that is before you, in specifics. I'm very concerned about that. I'm actually more frustrated by that than the fact I was originally opposed to the situation.
Well, the purpose for which you want to speak is to influence this group of people.
And anyone can, or against.
Right, and they're supposed to remain focused on the hearing, and not mass petitions or mass appearances. Well, the statute did not design the process to do that. If the statute, if the Kentucky legislators wanted to do it that way, why wouldn't they have just had the city council have the hearings? We'll just have a hearing here, everybody can have their say, and they'll make the decision, we'll eliminate planning commission. What would be the point of planning commission?
So I'm just here to tell you that, you know, I sought out some alternate opinion, I was told that this does not sound right by some other cities that adopt a similar principle, they think it's a stretch of something called the sunshine law, that city council cannot be having business outside of the city, that means them themselves meeting and discussing business before, but it does not say your constituents cannot talk to you. I think it's a stretch, and I just wanted to know the record.
It's funny, I just had this discussion today, I'm not sure if the mayor covered a lot about the proposed project, which is the zoning process we're covering on that matter. You know, they have, you want to have a planning, Compton and Kenton Planning Commission on there, so I'm not sure if you see the things that move through the cities.
Well, the Kenton County Planning Commission will make the recommendation to a fiscal court where to cover it.
Oh, okay, and then it will go there. So it's one step forward, because they don't have their own planning.
Some cities, one city I talked to, they'll let everybody speak, and they tell everybody, now, anything you say is not going to make any difference, and I'm going to tell, and that's the purpose of it, I'm going to tell council not to listen to anything you say, so you're not influenced. So they'll have people speak, but it's not supposed to hinder your path. So different cities handle it different ways.
I mean, so I'll tell you what, so I'm going to take a shot, I'm an attorney myself, and you have to think about orderly process for making any decision. And it's, you know, a principle of administrative law that you have to take advantage of and participate in the administrative process at each point, so that you can't wait and then, you know, sandbagging for lack of a better term, I know that's not what you're doing, but I mean, somebody could do that, and then go complain to the next level, or wait till it goes to the courts, and then go play, complain at that level, or wait till that is appealed to in appellate court, and then go and complain at that level. You know, the whole legal process has been designed to be efficient that way, so everybody has an equal opportunity. You know, whether you're for something, you're against something, obviously there's another side to this, there is somebody that actually does want, you know, this change, they request it, and so it has to be a fair and efficient process. And as set forth by the legal process established by the General Assembly, again, not by Fort Thomas, by the General Assembly, their process for making this fair and efficient is to have a hearing before the planning commission. And some of you did participate in that, and that gave people their right then to make their views known. That record has been provided to us, or we've talked about that, there was a transfer to that. So we know what people said, and we can base our decision. We don't have any other choice, that's what the General Assembly said we can do, and it is. And I'm just trying to explain why that is, I mean, if you were on the other side of this, you would, you know, be able to understand from a different, maybe a different perspective, but, you know, there is a reason that these things exist. It's not so, and so we don't make arbitrary decisions, whether you're, you know, in favor of a decision or not. It's an orderly, efficient process, you know, for decisions we make in this city.
Tim Utter, again, I'd like to speak, to your response, okay? I think we're calm, and all of us are feeling and thinking about the situation, that to have the process is not really fair at the outset. I'm probably on board with your idea about sandbagging, it's wrong for somebody to accompany the process and object, and delay, but here's, there should be some sort of, before that first meeting in June, whenever it was, where the record was established, that, there should have been some sort of meeting before that, where there was open talk about what was being proposed, so that the citizens, which you guys are all the stewards of, you are stewardship positions for all the citizens, not any specific business, but for all of us. So we feel like we've all been blindsided by this, and had, you know, even if, you know, even if it's the ones that knew about the date, there was not really related, okay? We don't really understand the process, you know, if, from the time the notice happened, maybe in the paper, I heard, I heard something, there was notice in the paper or the website. For me, that's an objectional, I don't know if it's in the paper, but I heard it's in the website, and, no offense, but I don't go to your website, and I don't read your, if it doesn't come in the mail, I don't take time to sit down and go to the website, I really don't. So, but the flyer I get, when I do get that in the mail, I do take the time patiently, if it doesn't get thrown out by my wife and my kids, and we're just like, so. But I think there was some preliminary hearing where we could understand what was going on, or we could understand what our rights are, the timeline, when we can speak, and the fact that once you get past this stage, that's the record that's established, and nothing else can be said, because, you know, if someone wanted to take this to court and appeal it now, which is the next logical process, you still really want to rely on that record. So the record was not really, really done with, to be honest with you. And I think that's what we're all speaking to, is that there needs to be some sort of change, so that you guys can effectively.
As I mentioned to you earlier, that's exactly what we've already talked about at the last meeting, was is there a better way that we can provide information? And actually, there was an article on Fort Thomas Matters about the proposed project early on in the process to give people a heads-up about the plan that was here, but as Ron said earlier, you have to understand, what we are having a first reading on tonight is that the request for a text amendment has nothing to do with any proposed project at all, because if there is going to be a proposed project, that would have to come back before planning and zoning. And then, all the property owners, the letting property owners would be notified by now that there is a request for a zone change to put this thing in place, and all those other things we talked about earlier will take place then. So there's another opportunity to do this. The text amendment itself, all it will do, if passed, is allow storage facilities, very limited storage facilities, limited in design, I take that back. If you are considering or thinking about a storage facility that you see along the highway with the zone, metal buildings with garage doors, that's not what this is proposing. In fact, the text amendment specifically says 95% of the doors have to be inside that you can't see. So it's a completely different design, it's a new design, and it has nothing to do with a typical storage facility. That's just the next amendment, there will be another opportunity for people to do it. But what we talked about at our previous meeting, and we will be discussing in our committees, is better ways to provide notice for all the things that come before a city, so that if someone's interested in participating in public hearings, that they have better notice.
But the text amendment, the text amendment is still part of the process, it's a necessary step, it's one of the steps.
Sure.
So I don't think, I don't think, being pointed out that it's of lesser importance is really fair, the situation.
No, I'm just saying that, I'm just saying that, we have discussed at length at our last meeting about ways that we can improve the notifications to citizens, and that we, not only did we follow the legal process, and I know that doesn't mean anything, but that there was, there was press coverage about the proposed plan prior to that meeting.
On TV?
No, on the website.
On the?
Yeah, we live on that, sorry. Anyway, we live.
I have one last question. Is there a limit in the text amendment as to the height of the structure that can be put up?
Not in the, not in the text amendment, but any zone district has height limitations as part of that investigation. So for example, in a residential zone?
So it's subject to the?
To the zone, but.
Thank you.
All right, yes, ma'am.
I'm Barbara Yingling, and I live at 1111 Alexander's. I, and I just had a couple of questions about the transcript that you're looking at, since that is the evidence that you're going to be looking at. Early in the transcript, there was a reference from Kevin Barbien, where he specifically said, we are the applicant, not by pile. I only have that page, because I didn't want to print all 13 pages out. It would have been around page four. Who was the actual applicant for the text amendment?
Jan, help me out here, but I think the statute 49, we refer to any individual who approached the planning commission or council, but technically, it's either the planning commission or a council that initiates it.
So there is no proponent, per se?
Well, the, a person can come and say, I would like you to consider this.
But would that be as part of the meeting?
Yes, it would be.
But this was, would have been before the meeting?
The meeting, when planning commission sets a meeting, they set it at one meeting for the next meeting. So there's always a full month we notice, that if you look at the minutes.
So in the May meeting, then?
They would have set that one.
As, that someone had approached in May. Because then, when you get to page 34, specifically, if you all wouldn't mind to look at that page, I'd appreciate that, there was a great deal of discussion from page 34 to 38 among the commission members about tabling the proposal. Two particular people, Tim Michael and Dave Wormal, both gave reasons why they believe that the proposal should be tabled. Some of that had a little bit to do with the people who had come forward and spoke, but there was a great deal of discussion about the language of the actual text amendment being maybe too restrictive legally, that could be challenged if someone wanted to put the fences and metal buildings up, that they could say that this text was way too restrictive in describing storage facilities. So I guess my question about that has to do with Jerry Moran, Moran, I don't know how, he repeatedly refers, he's, he's 34, that's, I think, why we came up with this definition, and we didn't make a change in that spot, we narrowed it down as well as we could, until we got, until it could be lived with in the neighborhood that is proposed as a professional office and general commercial. So I guess the question is, who actually, who does the actual language? Is that the commission who does the language?
Yes.
Okay, so he would have been leading that?
Well, somebody can come and propose something, and planning commission actually presents it. So planning commission can evaluate it and say, we're going to reword this, we're going to tweak it, we're going to make some changes.
Yes. Okay. So I think it's a little disingenuous, I guess, and though I think it's on the edge of the gap, I mean, I think you're being totally legal and open, but to say there really is no plan yet, when in the commission, then, in the transcript, he's talking about making sure that the text language is the kind of building that would be acceptable in Fort Thomas, but more likely also, I bet, in line with what the developers are already thinking. But I can say that, I don't know that, but I'm just, it might be.
No, my point, I'm sorry, my point was the process is that there's another step to this process.
Sure.
And this was simply the text amendment, there has to be another step yet as well.
Right. So again, from page 34 on page 35, Dave Wormal, I won't go through the whole thing for the career, because it's available, but says, I think it would be worth doing, at least that exercise gave me enough time and interest in this, that we come back next month and discuss it some more. And then Dan Thaler talked about, well, if we do it for this one, we have to do it for all 66 other things, and that's really, I mean, a non sequitur, but, and that's not even a commercial zone yet, is another response from Dan. We're not talking about this site, Jan mentions. And then, Tim says the same thing, you know, a concern, maybe we should table it, and it goes all the way down, and, you know.
Do you, I, we've all read this.
I know, but I'm wanting to make sure that the people who are here also.
Well, they have an opportunity to read it, is there a point?
My point is, yes, that at that point, it just ends up being, I think what we're saying, we're tabling is what Hans Tinkler says, and then the next thing I see is.
Then we're closed.
Dan says, yeah, well, let's move on.
We, everybody up here knows that.
Okay.
We have all this information, and all this stuff we're not supposed to hear, we're not supposed to be listening to, guess what, we've heard it now. We've heard it now.
Right. And that's why I'm sticking with the record, you know, not saying anything other than what's in the record.
Sure.
And I think it's important to know that there were two, no votes, though those were the two people who specifically requested tabling it, and it just seemed like that was very, you know, I guess, the motion couldn't have been made to table, it couldn't have been voted down, and we'd be back at where we are, but it seemed like it was just a vague, "All right, let's move on, and let's get this thing voted on." So that, I think, is something to take into consideration as council and commission review the record.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Mary Healy. I live at Blintan Hollywood, Fort Thomas, which is the southern best street, residential street in Fort Thomas. I promise I'm not here to talk about the text amendment or zoning change. But I am here to talk about the South Side, and I've talked about the South Side, but I've read two other more recent city council meetings. And what, I have lived in South Side for about thirty-five years. I have personally felt that the South Side has been short-changed in a number of respects. I thought perhaps I was a bully person. And when I was here at the last meeting, I felt a bit vindicated because there are other people in the South Side who care about the South Side, who may have observed that the South Side has not always received the attention that I personally think it deserves from the city council. I first of all want to thank every city council person for what they do for the city. It's a great city, it's a thankless job in many respects, and it takes a lot of time, and I'm sure you hear a lot of things that we would rather be under voting for. But I was disturbed last time because I think that the city council has to be aware that unfortunately, there are different sides in this city, and we're a very small community. I believe we have less than twenty thousand residents, and we should be a community, not one that thinks they're small, that I heard some people refer to as the South Sidelands, and last week. And I blame the South Side partially for that, because we have been silenced. And as you've observed in the last couple of meetings, we do have things that are of value to us. And one is a safe and quiet residential area. And why perhaps have we been slighted? And I have a few examples of that that I would like to bring to the city councils attended, for perhaps you to consider in your future actions. Part of it is, we have no pretty banners, we have no pretty planters, we have no hanging baskets. I looked into the cost of purchasing a ride on a bench, and I was told by a city employee who truly believes this, it would cost me twice of what apparently it does cost. So even our city personnel are not always trained to say that you are treated the same as the central business district in the Midway, and the cost that you're going to pay for a bench, which I was incorrectly told.
Did you get the correct information about that?
Ron Dill indicated when I brought it up that it was correct, but I had to bring it up at a city council meeting. Had I asked an employee, I hope they would...
I understand, I apologize for that. Is it, do you have new information for us? Because, I mean, we are aware of your concerns, and like I said, the visioning process has been part of this, and there's a lot of...
I want to address the visioning process. I served on the visioning committee for the land use, and I specifically said during that meeting that I was there to see that the South Side was represented. Every meeting would start off with the central business district in the Midway. I would have to bring up the South Side, and I was shut, I was listened to, and then they went on to the central business district in the Midway. No one wanted to give South Side any attention, even though I bothered up repeatedly. I also want to mention that, again, this is something that the councils, I commend the council that you've spent over six figures for the vision committee, but I also am concerned that not all the dots have been connected between all of the different committees. Apparently, the land commission did not know that the Parks and Recreation Committee had visions for the South Side, that some of the actions that the land use commission were taking that could have jeopardized some of the plans. So I am suggesting that perhaps city council and the land use commission, because they're so close to the release of the final plan, not make any permanent changes about land use or zoning changes before the, all the hard-earned time and expense has been brought before the council.
Well, that's all part of the process, and in fact, I attended a meeting last week where part of the wrapping up of this plan is to bring the six different groups together and make, and look at the overlaps, and look where things dovetail together, and where they don't, to figure out how to make those work. That's all part of the process.
It's part of the process, but if you're voting in another several weeks about a zone, a text amendment that may jeopardize some of those plans, I just caution you that the time you may not be the best for the money and time spent. One other thing I want to mention is, I think some of the processes in the city are not as fair, particularly to the South Side. You appoint a land use commission. That commission is all men, I think all of them have known each other for a long time. We celebrated the Fourth of July, the Fourth of July is for democracy. I think that the city council needs to take into consideration an appointment of its commission, particularly when they are votes that, if this procedure in the city is that you cannot have additional discussion, they should be commissions that are representative of race, gender, geographic diversity, which some of the commissions, particularly the land use, aren't. I also think it is supposed to be a democracy, that people who know each other and have been in business with each other should be encouraged to abstain in their votes, their important votes that are making so many or text amendment changes. And particularly, that should be noted by the city council when they are taking recommendations from different commissions, if there have been some favoritism shown. I, everyone has favorites, everyone treats their children differently, but I think in this situation where we have the city, that the South Side has felt disenfranchised in many respects, that I think is particularly important for the city council, that they want us to make a community and be a democracy, that you need to make more of those things in your front type of decisions when you make. And I, I hope that is something that, and I will say again, I want to emphasize, it's maybe because the South was reinsider, that you have not known what's important for the South. But we do want a safe, quiet, beautiful neighborhood, and some of the actions may not result in that unless this is all taken into consideration.
All right. Thank you, Greg.
You know, the only thing I would say about that is, if any good can come from this, maybe that's it. I mean, we need people involved. I've commented several times about, this city's going to work without city involvement. And actually, as was mentioned last week, one of the most exciting things to me, anyway, is this Smart Cities US Twenty-Seven Corridor initiative that there's grant money available for. And I would really encourage you strongly to be involved in this multi-cities, I mean, my understanding is from River to NKU, and this could really be transformative for that area.
And I think we are encouraged to be involved, that if our actions don't, again, have any long-term ramifications, because we are not only, we're not represented on the commission, that makes recommendations to the council, it's not going to be maybe beneficial to the South. So that's the point I'm trying to make. We need some voices, where we cannot have an opportunity to get voices in the appointment of commissions, and people who maybe haven't known each other for the last twenty years and gone into business endeavors. That's, some of those things are great, you can include the city, but there's a lot of opposition from one particular sector in the city, be it geographic or another side of diversity. I think that's important for our council to take in mind, that they are making appointments that would encourage all of the Fort Thomas community to be happy.
My name's Martha Kaufman. I live at sixty-four Hawthorne Avenue, and I want to say good evening to the mayor, and to all the people who serve our city very selflessly, and I'm very honored to stand here before you. They say that you find love in the strangest places, and maybe you don't think of finding love at a city council meeting on a rainy Monday night in Fort Thomas, but I'm here to talk to you about love. And I'm here to talk to you about the love that I feel for our town, and I suspect that many of you feel that as well, the city of Fort Thomas, Kentucky. I want to speak to you as a citizen, I want to make a request of you, as esteemed council members, you have the vested power to make a lot of decisions that will affect our city now and in the future. And I would like you to carefully reflect upon what the identity of our little town is, and what the vision is that you have for her. And I'm using the word "our town" collectively here, because I'm representing not just the people in this room, but I feel like I'm representing all of the best interests of our citizens. So let's just think for a minute about what is the identity of Fort Thomas, and are we satisfied with that? And when I think of my own identity or the identity of a person, I think of their heart, their soul, their values, their beliefs, what they stand for, and I know a town can't have an identity the same way a person can. But what do people think of when they hear the name of Fort Thomas? What does Fort Thomas stand for now, and what do we want her to stand for as we move forward? I was pondering this very question driving through Fort Thomas when I happened to drive by and come upon this poster, okay? This is the lovely Michelle Chalk, "Live Free Like Michelle." It's been about a year ago now that Michelle tragically died. She was not a student in my class, I taught in middle school for many years, but while she was alive, and since her passing, people still talk about Michelle, and how radiant she was, and how helpful she was, and how thoughtful she was, and she was the kind of person that came into a room and made the room a better place, okay? So many teachers would talk about her, not to mention her talents. So as I stared at this picture and thought about Michelle, my mind quickly left to another student, Queen Stapleton, who incidentally passed away twelve years ago on this very day, okay? And God rest him, and Quinn, I hope you're helping me get through this speech today, okay? Quinn was one of my former students, but the whole town rallied around the Chalk family, around the Stapleton family, okay, and helped them get through these difficult times. Then I thought about pray for Clay. Just this summer, a student stopped me on the street, "Ms. Kaufman, Ms. Kaufman," they always stop me, by the way, it's so cool, they rolled down their windows of their cars they could drive now, and were ready to have a wreck screaming at me, and I'm like, "No, no, no." Okay? But, so he stopped me, and I said, "I'm sorry, I can't remember who you are." And he said, "It's me, it's Clay." I said, "Clay Fring?" The last time I saw Clay was in my class. Shortly after that, he was hit by a car, he was in a hospital or rehab for like a year. I think at that point, he went on to the high school, I had him in seventh grade. He's a senior in college now, he's studying math, he always was a math whiz, okay? I thought about, we did pray for Clay, we did win for Quinn, we did tie bows all over the city for Michelle. I thought about Brady Walls, when he was in my class and diagnosed with leukemia. He's been doing great, so wonderful to know that, okay? So then, all of a sudden, it occurred to me what this city is about, okay? I mean, it's about the Al Salvato Frostbike Five Walk, whatever, the run that they do every year in January. You know, it's about the Pumpkin Walk, it's about Weebley Blue, right? It's about all these different things. It's about art around town, it's about the farmer's market, we're a tree city, we're the city of beautiful homes. It's about the small businesses in our community, where there's like little small dreams that kind of come true. It's like your little slice of the American pie, okay, living here in Fort Thomas. It's where you walk down the street and you see your neighbors, and you actually know your neighbors, and you care about your neighbors, and there's really not very many secrets on your street, okay? Don't try to keep it secret, you're not a neighbor, okay? This is who we are, all right? And my question is, do we want to change this culture? Do we want to change our identity? And if we do, why do we want to do it? Let's think about this, okay? And I'm going to tell you right now that I am an expert on the culture of Fort Thomas, because after teaching for fifteen, roughly, years, fifteen and a half, I taught at least eighteen hundred and seventy-five students. So not only did I meet them, but I met their families and their siblings and their friends, who I may not have taught. And I did the math, and I roughly influenced about nine percent of the whole population of the city. Now, not in a given year, but over Tom, all right? That's pretty significant. And I want to say as well that they influenced me, all right? But I am an expert on the culture in Fort Thomas, and I know a lot of stories too, okay? But anyway, the point I want to make here is, and this kind of piggybacks off of Ms. Healy's comment, I met students and parents, they were amazing, they were loving, they were skillful, they were generous, they were warm, they were talented, they were resourceful, they were helpful. I met beautiful people from all parts of this town. The South End, believe it or not, the mid part of the town, Midtown, and the North End, okay? And I don't really necessarily want to share with you some of the comments the student made, there is a divide in this town. There is a divide between the North and the South. And as I talk to different people about the issue at hand here, the most common, the most frequent comment that I heard was about the South End, which is where I live, by the way, and I'm very proud of it, it just feels different. It doesn't feel the same. People said things very similar to this as to students. So I think when I'm asking you to reflect on our town and what our vision is, I'm talking about the whole town. I'm not just talking about my part of it, okay? Because we want to be a unified town, and that's where our strength is. I think we're talking a little bit here, too, about commercialization, and, you know, possibly changing some of the areas to be more commercial, not just one area, there's talk about some areas in the center of town that might be commercialized. I knew nothing about any of these, but once I started talking to people, I got a lot more information than I ever wanted, really. But I kind of want to talk about what kind of neighborhoods do we want? Do we want little small communities, a little small neighborhood? Do we want that kind of feel? Or do we want it to be more commercialized? There's advantages to both, I would say. So I started thinking about what streets maybe should, would lend themselves to commercialization, like what about Mon Street, Hawthorne Avenue, okay? What about the street where I used to babysit, over on Riverside Parkway? What about maybe Walker Road? What about Zambury Ridge? What would be the best place for commercial buildings, okay, or to change the zoning? What would be the best? And I just thought about maybe, if change is going to come, I decided to sort of put some commercial buildings next to just some residences in Fort Thomas. And I looked at this building, this house, I just happened to pick, oh, six houses, and I looked at this house, and I noticed there were a lot of trees behind the house. And I didn't dare step into their yard, because that wouldn't be right, I wasn't invited, but I thought, I bet they really like having that green space, that nature, those beautiful trees, that sort of privacy in their backyard, where they're not really bothered by any kind of commercialized buildings. I looked at this house, and I noticed that there was a stroller on the sidewalk in front of the house. And I thought, I bet they chose this house because it's next to a lot of other nice houses, right next to them, with all kinds of trees and green space, and the kids can play together, and they're probably hoping there'll be many strangers that don't live in the neighborhood coming and going. I think that's probably pretty smart. I went to this house, which I couldn't see very well, and I couldn't trespass, it was way up on a hill, kind of looked like a newer house to me, and I thought perhaps this family had built this house to kind of get away from commercialization, to kind of be like separate, kind of have their little peaceful spot that was quiet, kind of a green space for them. I noticed this house had woods to the side and to the back of it, okay? So really, they had two outlooks from their windows or their porches, but it was just a really nice wooded area, probably with not a lot of commercial buildings in view.
Martha says, if you go to home, to school, and as we all know, it's a pretty great school, right? It's a pretty great education system, a great percentage of our taxes and our money and our efforts go on the at school, and you can have a spiritual around the town. And I feel as if, well, number one, this town is a priority. We're very comfortable here. Then, number two, we have such great opportunities, and we have, you know, we kick off these, we kick off qualities all around town. We have amazing, amazing times, and we create just a great atmosphere for kids, for adults. It's a family, family town. create just a great atmosphere for kids, for dogs. It's a family-friendly town. Why would we struggle with that? That's it. Okay.
Anyone else like to address council? Thank you all. We can move ahead with our agenda. The next thing, we have the fire department want to report to Mayor Chief Bailey.
I think this is on. Thank you, Mayor Hauss, member of the council. I really don't have anything to add to the monthly report that was bailed out of your practice, but I would like to just kind of brief you a little bit on our new hire update that's going on, obviously, for firefighter paramedic Matt Stewart, retired August first. We had thirty applicants that tested, and of those thirty, twenty-one moved on to the second phase of that process. Those twenty-one went through a preliminary interview with myself and my three captains, and that was narrowed down to basically rank them one to twenty-one. Last Monday, the thirteenth, the mayor, Mayor Hauss, Mr. Dill, and myself interviewed those top five candidates, and did a, I used a testing company this time, Fire Service Testing out of Florida, which I've used a number of times for book-written tests, as well as promotional process advancements within the fire department. And so we used them, and basically, they conducted the oral interview in front of the three of us, the five candidates. And so those results have been sent in, and I've received them back. So right now, I'm in the process of waiting, and we'll set up a meeting with Mayor Hauss, Mr. Dill, and myself to kind of look at those five candidates, put them in that order as far as what the testing company has said, as well as the other preliminary interview processes that they might throw. And then we'll rank them one to five, and probably be able to have some time, hopefully by the first of, maybe even September fourth meeting, some kind of a conditional offer out there to the next employee of the Fort, city of Fort Thomas, Fort Thomas Fire Department. So we're moving on. And the process takes a little time, but we've got a good start on it, thanks to Matt being open about his retirement. And so I appreciate, again, Mayor Hauss, Mr. Dill, able to get that accomplished here, and I'm sure we'll finish that up here in the next few days or the next week at least. But I'd be glad to field any questions council may have in regard to the fire department. Operation is normal.
Any questions to the chief?
Mr. Bailey.
Hi.
Mr. Bailey.
Hi.
Mr. Thaler.
Hi.
Mr. Slade.
Hi. Thank you. Thank you, chief. Police department want to report.
Mr. Mayor, I would just like to report that Mike Taylor retired last month, and he served as citizen of Fort Thomas for twenty-four years, the last thirteen of which is chief. So he's certainly put in his time and effort to keep our citizens safe. We will definitely all miss his leadership and miss his friendship. He's lived in some big shoes with them. On a personal note, I'd like to thank you and everyone else in this room for your support in my new role. I'm very excited to take over and try to build on the success that we have already achieved. And I can't wait to see where we go from here. So thank you.
Absolutely.
You're welcome.
This is great.
Thank you.
Congratulations. All right. Mayor Dean, motion.
Come over to the chief in five seconds.
Several seconds.
Mr. Cameron.
Hi.
Hi.
Mr. Thaler.
Hi.
Hi.
All right. City administrators report, Mr. Dill.
Okay. Actually, I have good news to report. First item is pedestrian safety initiative. This council, and actually the previous council, initiated some concerted effort to do improvements in our community regarding pedestrian safety, specifically our crosswalks and around our schools, and in our business districts, and where, obviously, that's really important. The first kind of success with that was in front of Moer, really, we were in the meeting writing, and we saw that we constructed, and we're probably the renovations at Moer. We just received confirmation in the last couple of weeks from the Highway Department that they will now be approving those mechanisms on state routes at our request for the areas specifically around High School, High School, St. Thomas, and the Bluegrass intersection here at the end of the business district. As the first opportunity on a state route to place those back crosswalks. If you recall, we had some difficulty having those mechanisms approved. So I know a number of, Mr. Cameron has had some, given some time to take, and there was a staff continuing to work with them. But we did gain, from there, a group of working application to have those installation. So that's very good. Very good. On reference to the Vision Community Plan, and some individuals reference that, this is a compilation of, in a draft, very preliminary draft form, of all the six committees. Our consulting team is working on melding those together. Those will be placed into a final draft that will be forwarded not only to the council, but to planning commission when there is a final draft available. There will be a public meeting scheduled to share all that information with all its committee members, and hopefully all the public. Everybody who's putting in their work will see it brought into a final form and presented into the U D E through formal adoption processes with goals and objectives, the comprehensive plan portion, the Parks and Recreation portion, in a master plan form. So we're excited about that moving forward. It's a culmination of a lot of effort from a lot of individuals. Certainly not too late for the public to engage, so we're forward to moving that along. And again, the references, ftcommunityplan.com, and all the meeting dates and all the updates will be posted on there. So if anyone's interested following that, or... On the Alexander Circle, if you've been by there, a couple of changes. One is, it is closed for the public, and, you know, we're all happy that there's progress there. Unfortunately, the process is underway right now. We're not allowing the public to enter into those spaces. They're doing all the demolition work, replacing roof, roofing. When I say demolition, interior demolition, they're doing the best that's possible. So there'll be a period of time where the public won't have access, so please be alert to that. We're working with our Recreation Department to plan and schedule around that current situation. But it will be, obviously, a public street, and it's a public, it's a public future. But we're happy to have the developer on site, actually making progress for renovation of the home. It's pretty exciting. On the street program, the place, the water main is in. They have to do the services. Unfortunately, we need to structure a pen lane. We'll be tearing that street out probably right around coming out of the night day hallway. The last item I had, we have received some calls regarding the air traffic over Fort Thomas from Long Ken. Earlier in the year, they did renovation work, specifically Third August Runway, which routed differently than what maybe some of our residents have been.